If we could all please stand, we'll do the pledge and small prayer. Start by handing it. Uh, Mike, would you like to lead some of the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With our heads. Dear heavenly fathers, may your grace upon us help us to make good and wise decisions. Help to keep our meeting peaceful and cordial, and please protect us as we all travel home. In your name we pray. Amen. All right. All right, let me welcome everybody here to the Wells County Council Regular Session, Monday, December twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. We're here with just a few items. Most of it's transfers here. Um, I guess we don't have minutes on there, do we? Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with transfers here. Did everybody receive the transfers electronically? And there was the last one here, kind of the last minute on, uh, did everybody receive that transfer? So, was there any questions or anything in regards or concerns over? Again, everything is just, uh, moving things around so that everything's in the black and not in the red online items.
I have...
Anybody else? If not, do we have motions to accept all these men- or transfers at one motion?
We have motions to accept all the transfers.
Do we have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further conversation? If not, all in favor signify by raising your hand. opposed, motion carries there. We're all good there. All right, next thing we have is BCS Management, Lana. How do you pronounce your last name?
It's Lana Burson.
Lana, okay, Lana Burson, okay. Welcome, you're here with the, uh, information about the Regional Sewer District.
Yes, so the line item should be the Regional Sewer District. I've asked Nate to, uh, he has to tell. And Mike, if you offer me the initial issue...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'll let you, I'm sorry, Mike is the President of the Regional Sewer District.
You know, a little bit of background if you'd like. Initially Lana was contracted by the commissioners to do some RSD development work for us, going to give us a little bit of, uh, feedback on where we're headed as our group. Initially Nate, uh, has been guiding us through his experience with Adams County and of course Mark Berry. But Lana has been gracious enough to join us on our board, or at our board meetings now to give us some other guidance in a more general direction about how the RSD should function or perhaps maybe negotiate with different municipalities on sewage rates and how to get finalized arrangements with deals on how to conclude, uh, the actual agreements and then ultimately put us in a path to self-sustainment ultimately is the goal. And I think in general, uh, you know, I think you've made it to three or four of our meetings. She was, when did you start?
Uh, it's really only been a couple months ago.
Yeah, so, so really only a couple months. She's actually moves it faster than what the rest of us are already for because she's a, she's hitting it at full, at full pace and we're kind of been just absorbing it as we go. So she's gonna come in here and give us a little bit of a rundown of where we sit right now in general terms. I didn't even see the, the presentation myself, so it's in such good hands, she can handle it.
I know the presentation and typically when I say I'll make this quick, it's going to be in two hours. You know, I know you guys are first party kids, so I will make this quick. Um, uh, my intention is to work in partnership with Nate. Nate's been running this, um, as a second job, so to speak, for, uh, for some time, and I think that there's a little bit of a bandwidth issue and then also when you're dealing with, uh, a sewer district that does not have operations at this time. So there is no, uh, the first project that was done was turned over to the city of Bluffton. So the Regional Sewer District doesn't have any employees, it doesn't have any rates, it doesn't have a lot of things that are missing above and beyond the, you know, getting projects engineered and understanding from the Department of Health what the priorities are, things like that. Um, and I think that's why we've, we're at where we're at right now, which is maybe a misunderstanding of what the Regional Sewer District is going to do and how it's going to get to a point where it operates as a standalone entity of government, which it is, instead of asking for funding for every little thing, uh, as it moves forward. So a lot of what I'm, I'm working to do is to build out an operational plan. It's actually not new, it's a template that I've used in other counties to understand at what point, whether it's next year, or two years from now, or five years from now, the Regional Sewer District can stand on its own. And theoretically, if it's not standing on its own within a year, you can see clearly the reduction in supplement that's going to be required along the way. Um, that's still a work in progress. We've got to negotiate a lot of service agreements and, uh, rates and things like that to get to that point. Um, I want to have Nate, I, I know that Nate has, knows a lot about the SRF process, and I brought a handout from the Indiana Finance Authority website that, uh, it's mostly just a reminder to help facilitate the discussion to where we're at right now. And Nate is more familiar with that process, I think, than I am. And he, um, represented the Regional Sewer District in negotiations with the state. Uh, for the three projects that you see listed on this little report that I have, um, to do a PER, which is a preliminary engineering report that was financed, I think by the county, right?
Yep, the county commissioners put, uh, put some seed money up. Actually, the state, uh, Indiana Finance Authority, which is, uh, essentially that covers the State Revolving Loan Fund, uh, gave us a grant, a matching grant, fifty-fifty for the development of these project areas, which allowed us to do both the preliminary engineering report, some environmental work, and the applications. I'm sorry, I've got a little bit of a chest cold today, so, um, but I'm well on the mend now. It's gonna sound worse than I actually feel. Uh, but we're, we're kind of at this point where our, our PER is just about at the point of being approved by SRF, but it hasn't been scored. So really, I think there's what, like twelve bullet points on that area, on that plan, but I think we're like four or five in the application because we haven't really started to close on the projects. We haven't started the actual engineering. The seed money was to get our projects, to identify the areas and service areas that we wanted to start with. Based on the, the input that I was given early on and what the Regional Sewer District received, the sewer board, uh, decided to simply try to address the immediate violation areas and then the immediate adjacent area that had been studied already, which is the Murray, Country Club Estates, and then the North Austin, where we knew we had violations. And so that's what we've kind of targeted. And with bringing Lana in, we're trying to answer questions that have been brought up, well, how are we going to be sustainable moving forward? We know, we knew early on that these areas were too small to be truly sustainable, but we're trying to keep our scope as narrow as possible, rather than just do something very large. I think in the direction with Lana's expertise, it looks like we're gonna have to kind of open that up long-term to get the loan, the five-year, multi-year plan together.
There's, there's a minimum.
Yeah, there's a minimum number, we've got to hit, and we don't believe we're gonna hit that with that, but it was something that we were gonna have to address sooner or later, sort of satisfy, um, both council and the commissioners for the board. Uh, but we were able to get our projects scored very highly because of our needs. SRF looked at the plan, both State Revolving Loan Fund, USDA, which is a federal grant program, uh, Rural Development also likes our project and considers it very highly. They haven't scored theirs because there's a different application process, but their cycle is essentially annual. So for us, we need to be at a point where we could say at the end of this next fiscal year, uh, June, July, that we're ready to try to close on the grant, actually build our project. And so we need to decide fairly quickly, you know, what do we want to engineer? What do we want to have ready with plans with detailed estimates, so we can move forward? It's somewhat backwards, but essentially you've got to put the front money up to build a plan so that you can say, we can receive your grant money, because they essentially appropriated each calendar year.
Essentially, I see it as, I understand why they do it. It's due diligence to ensure that you're not setting aside state dollars for projects that are not going to actually afford. But conversely, it makes it very challenging for entities, especially that don't have a large stockpile of money, to actually get loans because you have to do half of the work before you can actually close on your SRF financing. So I listed a timeline here...
You say half the work, not construction, just the engineering side?
It's everything preliminary too, so...
Essentially, you've got to do...
I put a timeline here, and the, the little gray bit at the beginning is Project Connie, PER, SRF ranking. That is not to scale as far as the duration, but we would be probably, it would not fit on the paper if I made that scale. The blue area there is where we're at now. So there's been a ranking, there's a PER completed, we're ready to put all of the detailed requirements together to close on an SRF loan. That takes money. You have to pay an engineering firm, you have to pay a legal, you have to be bond counsel. I think I'm getting your head cold right now.
That's right.
Yeah, the, the good news, so that's for everything up to closing. That includes submitting and, uh, understanding who your contractor is going to be. And then once you close on the SRF loan, two things happen. One, you can give notice to proceed to your contractor for construction, and those construction costs and fees associated with construction are paid on a draw basis through your SRF loan. Additionally, any costs incurred by contractors up until that point are qualifying SRF loan expenditures. They have to be made upfront. So the, the other thing, the second thing that we do right out of the gate is say, these are all the expenditures that have been made to date on these projects, and submit a payment tab to SRF, and they send a check back. So it's a, that's where the reimbursement bit comes in. Usually, a sewer district, uh, without funding will either ask for county assistance or will take out a bond anticipation, out a ban, that's pretty common. The ban, the issue with a ban is that it takes a while to process. It also means they have to incur additional, uh, legal fees, and then also there's interest incurred on that as well. So, and all of these costs ultimately go to the rate payer. So the more we can cut down the costs, the, the more affordable rates are going to be because essentially it goes into the total of your bond, and the bond is split amongst the rate payers for the payment, and, uh, all of those pieces come together to, is your rate affordable or is it not? So, um, while I, I've been said to be pushing things rather aggressively, it is an annual cycle, as Nate stated, and design takes six months. Uh, the closing is going to take a month, the bid process is going to take a month. So really, on an annual cycle, when you're looking to close in third quarter on your SRF loan, the time is pretty much now, uh, especially if you don't want to be pushing engineering firms harder than what they plan to do. I'm pushing them downward on their fees, so I don't want to also push them on their schedule because it's usually one or the other. Um, so we're, we're looking to understand how this phase is going to temporarily be financed between now and the time an SRF loan is closed. And it has to happen. Uh, the county can go up for a ban and get it done. Um, but again, it's going to delay the initiation of that design phase, and it's also going to mean that they incur the bond counsel fees and, and additional interest and things like that. So, I know you all just met me, um, but I, I do understand this process very, very well. My job is to, and, and our company is a project management company, but I personally specialize in regional sewer districts and municipalities, um, is to make sure that these things happen on the timeframe that's been written out here. And this is a draft timeframe, but in 2020. Um, and by doing so, ensuring that all of the promises that are made and, and things like that actually come to fruition. We don't lose SRF ranking, we have to go back and revise the PER, so again, then we're having the same conversation in 2021.
Just curious, out of either choice, the ban or the county loan requirement, which of the two is most popular and what you've experienced?
It's usually a combination thereof, depending on the size of the project. Some counties will, if it's...
I assume you've, we're not your first county doing this, obviously.
No, 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 no. Um, and a lot of times the county commissioners will fund the startup of a, of a regional sewer district, and then they will ask council to reallocate additional seeded funds to get the initial projects off the ground, which is what we're talking about here.
But I'm just talking between the, one of the two choices, the, the ban is what the, that's going through the bond. It's a different or, that's a different process, yeah.
You're going outside.
Yeah, so which one of the two are the most popular of these? You do one or the other, right, typically?
Not necessarily.
Not, okay.
I, I will say this, um, I have seen it where, that we go up for a ban, and because the sewer district is new and doesn't have any debt history, the county will back it up. Um, and perhaps put down the down payment to get it started. So the county would back up the, the bond.
I'm just curious, I just, I was just curious of which, but some counties float the whole, the whole cash for it and then...
Yeah, and what Williams, it's, it's, Adams County on that. The county commissioners essentially loaned the, the RSD a hundred thousand dollars to start out. Uh, then the county, uh, board after RSD got started the project, did the ban. And I think in hindsight, as the county commi- council looked back on it, they didn't like how the ban essentially, what it cost the RSD for the duration of the project. And so on this latest project, another ten million dollars in design, or not design, in construction projects in six areas, they've loaned the RSD, uh, half a million dollars for those project areas to try to move it forward. So when you said there's been a combination, it exactly is, because sometimes it just depends on the situation, which county, what the county finances, or even what they can do, and what the project needs are. We're at a position right now where essentially the RSD is gonna make a decision if we're gonna move forward on projects. They're gonna have to vote on, on moving forward. And the, the best case scenario for the customers that the RSD is looking to try and serve would be to, to do a zero interest loan without a secondary closing, without secondary bond counsel, to move forward on the engineering. And then those expenses, when we're able to secure a grant through SRF, we can essentially, the first law would be to pay it totally back.
And, yeah, and that is a thirteen-twenty-six law, yeah?
And that would be essentially the commitment, is that if, if we get the loan, the RSD, the board is gonna have to report the project because we, we would have to, we have essentially county money that we need to be reimbursed.
How fast does that normally get reversed back?
Uh, as soon as we're able to close, which...
Because that's, the first one paid back is who's loans.
The first one would be the, that first expense.
The whole thing, though, because that's immediately, if it doesn't go through, just hypothetical, if it didn't jump through the hoop in Indianapolis, and that money, that money that you, you know, let's say for example, a county does loan you money, loans an RSD money, it just can, how lo- I mean, if, if, how long can it go before it has to start all over again? If it doesn't meet, doesn't, you know what I'm saying? How long can the money be laying out there that the county would loan? Is there a timeframe? Is there any timeframes, is it...
That would be something that you could potentially put in writing between the RSD and the county council.
That's the agreement you would do with the county to the Regional Sewer District.
And in a internal agreement between the two organizations that says, we're gonna loan this to you at, uh, X terms, and we assume we're gonna get it paid back in one dispersment SRF this year, but if that doesn't happen, it needs to happen the next year, or some, you know, put some limit to it.
Because obviously they're...
We've got, I mean, SRF is a world of funding groups. We also have the option to go from Bureau of Spesia for state or federal. I mean, with USDA Rural Development is the other option. They actually allow E applications monthly. Um, SRF being local is a little easier process to go through, but it's annual, so it's hit or, it's all or nothing. With USDA, there's other opportunities. So if the timeframe became something we're concerned about, moving forward on the project, the board could decide to go through USDA. It's more work for our engineers than for them, but if, if it's do or die on the project, I'm sure that they, they'd consider moving forward with those as options. Um, just to answer questions as far as closing, uh, Adams County got a grant through SRF, and they were rushing us to try to close. We still haven't closed with them. So they wanted us to run through the projects, and we're absolutely gonna be ready to close by September, end of September. Here it is the end of December, and they still have a summer day. So they, they're anxious to move forward, but again, as with anything, we're anticipating that they try to drag on. You don't want to count on that, but again, it's, as soon as they get that, it's just, you're waiting for them to try to approve it, so...
So I'm gonna make a statement here real quick. I, I want everybody to know I'm, I'm an advocate for what the RSD's done and what they're proposing. But everything I've seen and heard, I do not see enough rate payers to be able to make it, I'll say profitable, or at least to where you can even pay back the county on the loan.
And, and that, that is valid concern. Um, the model, the Regional Sewer District model is, is set up so that the rates, you're allowed, it's a net zero, non-for-profit model. You recouping rates what your expenses are and your debts are, so your operational expenses and your debts. Profitability is not a goal of, of an organization like this. The, the reason we have to push for cost reductions in the, in the engineering and the construction and the efficiencies there is because we will pay back the county. If, if the, the cost of what we're trying to do here doesn't make sense, uh, from a per, I call it per EBU basis, meaning it's a, it's a amount of debt, it's a simple division, the number of customers divided by the total debt. These projects are high in that regard, meaning that the total cost of the project divided by the number of customers is higher than what we typically look for, for EBU. That's where the assistance comes in. SRF looks at that and says, this is too, too costly for what's gonna make rates affordable. And then they offer assistance, meaning not, it's not a grant, it's a, a non-repayable loan, it's a piece of that.
For a...
That's from the state side.
That's from the state side, so...
There's your difference.
... benefit districts that are essentially where the cost, the cost benefit essentially is, is so upside down. But they, from an environmental standpoint, say, we need to try to make sure that these, these hoosiers are served, and this is a, a good use of our tax dollars to try to get back to that point where it can be.
Curious to know, do we pay for that, or does the, those studies on, on their incomes and whatnot? Or does that, the state does that? I assume that comes into play, right?
Income studies, as far as the income analysis?
Is that, is that part of your, that's something totally separate, okay.
No, that's for OCR or things like that.
Yeah, OCR wouldn't be doing that.
I don't like, I don't want to get dragged into an area, but I'm just curious, just curious.
That's what's in this money. Point is, is that you will recouping rates what your costs are. However, there is obvi- obvious limit to that. If rates are astronomical, you're going to just be processing liens, people won't be paying them, you're gonna cause an issue. So...
And the state assistance is not guaranteed.
It's not guaranteed.
And it's, furthermore, it's not guaranteed annually. They can go out five years and then cease. And then that debt will come back onto the county.
Well, the rate payers. It's, we'd like to think that, I know, we'd like to say that, yeah.
The only, the only, yes, so the, the, the risk there is that all of the rate payers of the county vacate their homes and leave them, uh, because of their sewer bill, which, yeah, I'm not trying to be bony, that's gonna happen. Um, if it's, you know, you're talking two hundred and some dollar a month sewer bills, that's gonna happen. That's not, not what we're talking here. Uh, we're making, um, we're, we're pushing very, very hard on the engineering, the contractors, and then the ranking that, that Wells County Sewer District was given by SRF tells us that, no, the assistance is not guaranteed. But I've been doing sewer district projects for seven years, and I've never seen an SRF project not get some little assistance. Maybe that's just my own experience, but they're very, very heavy handed on assistance for environmental requirements and then where there's environmental issues, and then also where it looks like rates are going to be unaffordable unless they give that assistance. So, not guaranteed, but very problematic.
And, and the, the financial assistance is all upfront. And so what you're, what you're looking at is when they have the money, you want to try to apply, because once we secure that financing, the grant assistance, whether it's forty or fifty percent forgivable loan, that happens immediately on the project. Once you complete the construction of it, that assistance essentially is there baked into the project. And of the, I think in our ranking, whether it was eight of the top ten, or seven of the top nine, projects were all septic elimination projects, which is exactly what this sewer district project is. You're essentially going against projects like the Bluffton Water Treatment Plant. The septic projects get forgivable loans. The other utility projects could also be secured financing through SRF or a hundred percent loan dollars. And so they might subsidize the interest rate, but they don't forgive the debt or the loan money on those projects like they do on these sewer and septic projects because they realize that, that Indiana has a problem when it comes to septic systems and failing septic systems. So they want to see that stuff done, they want to see legalization done, and they're using their, your tax dollars at a state level to speak for this for that, so...
It, it just seems to me that you can extrapolate out, you know how many homes are out there through Murray, through Country Club Estates, you know we don't want to go over a hundred dollars a month on the rate. It seems pretty easy to put numbers on paper.
From the, uh, the debt service perspective, absolutely. Um, a hundred dollars a month for a regional sewer district bill is really good. Reason being that when, uh, and I'm sure you all, all know this, when infrastructure is built at the same time as the home, so the opposite of septic elimination projects, you're paying for the debt service of that infrastructure through the cost of the lot when you build a new home, or through the mortgage of the home that was built some time ago. So the homeowner is paying for that infrastructure element through a different channel, so through the lot price or through the mortgage. In septic elimination, they're paying for that infrastructure element after the fact, and so it's wrapped up into the sewer bill instead of into the mortgage or the lot price. So you can't really compare in-city or new development rates to septic elimination rates. Fortunately, a, a good approach to this is to look at the sewer district as more than just septic elimination, but an opportunity for economic development facilitation outside of the city as well. And I've seen that happen. Montgomery County is doing that, uh, their redevelopment commission funded a sewer district and all the infrastructure and a new wastewater plant for the sewer district to facilitate economic development. And then picked up, using TIP dollars, not necessarily applicable here, but it's just worth mentioning that sewer districts don't have to be the, uh, the, the, the bad news bearers of just, let's pick up the projects that are a mess, and we absolutely have to, and then somebody's gotta deal in pain for this. Look at it as a, as a facilitator and a channel through which to extend infrastructure in places where you have an industrial park, or you want to build new houses. That doesn't have to go, uh, to a city entity, and by doing that, you reduce your debt per customer lever and eventually come to some sort of rate control. I agree, individually, these projects, they, they, they're expensive for the number of homes you're picking up, but you have to start somewhere. And you can do, you can review rates on, on an annual basis. If, if you're picking up new projects and you're cutting down operational costs, again, it's all about that net zero model. So if you can find ways to cut here and cut there and, and add without taking on additional debt by a public-private partnership, you can, uh, you can build out that self-sustaining model. We don't have operational numbers yet. We don't have administrative costs, maintenance costs. We don't have treatment costs from, you know, our local providers. That's, that's just gotta be done by the time they close on the SRF loan, but...
And thankfully, with the loan we're talking about here today, essentially can be done as a draw. So essentially, you're not losing that money directly to the RSD until we're able to make some of these specific elements and steps along those and moving forward. And some of the things that you're asking for, Chuck, specifically, are why the commissioners asked to have BCS step in to develop these more complex models because we, we anticipated that really these small areas, we were concerned that exactly that, that we weren't gonna be able to be self-sufficient without subsidizing the district heavily through county dollars, and that that wouldn't be essentially favorable for either commissioners or council. So to do that, the district's gonna have to have a larger, long-range plan, and I don't have the time to do that, and I don't necessarily want to be the poster child for the RSD long-range plan. That's not necessarily my, my major goal for you and, and my position here. So I think it was best for the commissioners and for all of us involved to, to bring BCS in to give us a, a stronger plan moving forward, so...
So there is a long-term plan in process, but why, why we're here today is to talk about first, projects out of the gate, and how we're gonna get contracts signed with the various vendors to move this forward.
And that's been a, that's been a difficult step of working with the municipalities because the RSD essentially hasn't come, they don't see us as coming to them in good faith because they don't see us as a serious utility or a, a serious partner for projects. So, and I think that's starting to change as we've gotten a larger plan together, as we've started to get the Mark Murray on, on board, and the BCS on board. We're starting to actually make some ground, make up some headway for what's been, what I think some would look at as been a, a poorer approach for the RSD in the past. So that's, I think we could do something faster than sixteen years.
Has it been sixteen years now?
It's been a while.
Is that how long that's gone?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. Uh, and if, if I start looking back to the initial discussions that we've had, uh, we are flying in comparison. It may seem like this, what we're doing, what I've done, has taken a long time. If, if I look back at the history, you'll, you'll either laugh or be embarrassed. I mean, it's just, that's a shame that it took so long.
So I'm assuming, any other questions, or I'm...
Well, as I said, the, the objective ultimately here is that this is informational, so that the council knows where we're at. Lana's taken the lead on the engagement with various contractors and municipalities on what we're doing here as far as that goes. But these projects, as they're laid out here, the next step is to be able to move forward, just like our timeline indicates. So the, the goal here was to get consensus from this board or this panel here as to whether there's wherewithal to commit resources to the RSD to be able to move forward at a quicker pace than to go and look for bond counsel and get that next step. I mean, we'll have to do that anyway, but, but to be moving step by step here as we go, what, what is your sense of it, Lana? I mean, if we come before council with a proposal with numbers, that's the next step too?
Sure, so all in, um, after I asked a proposing engineering firm to go back and try again, um, we knocked two hundred thousand dollars off of the engineering fee and I got a... we knocked $200,000 off of the engineering fee, and I got a second opinion. All in, we're at about $600,000, $580,000. We were closer to $800,000, so that's a big difference. I believe that that is more than enough to get everything done. So whether that's a combination financing, or if it's a partial loan with a ban to follow after that, one way or another, I feel, I feel very confident about that. The engineering firm that I asked to propose on this was one that I've worked with on these types of projects in collaboration before. So I feel comfortable in how we would be able to hit the ground running, we all know each other and how it works, and just get it done. The question is still going to come down to the dollars, the bond council, and how much assistance we get. The actual execution of getting a project planned and ready to go, I feel very confident in that for the prices that we received.
So are you looking to come back after the first of the year with specifics then? Is that kind of looking at more likely at this stage? So I mean, we at least absorb, we're absorbing some of what's happening here.
If you're favorable to it, I mean, if you're, we're all saying that this isn't something you're interested in, then the RSD will have to, they're January meeting discussed a ban if they want to move forward with it in which project areas. But I mean, you're talking about anywhere from a six to $10 million construction project. I mean, that's how broad the early estimates, it's just two different engineers' estimates and two different approaches for the project. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of variation, which kind of explains why you're talking about that much startup cost. And that's, those numbers are competitive. I mean, what Lana's done with those are, I mean, low in comparison to what we've seen elsewhere on other types of projects. So I mean, that's, that's not an exorbitant amount, and that is all the project areas that we have currently approved through, I say approved loosely with us around. So that's, that's all in all of our project areas.
But my sense of it is our January 7th meeting will be when there'll actually be a real ask. At this point, people can take the information, think through it a little bit. Initially, this, this objective here is to get people aware.
Because obviously, the county only has such a size of a piggy bank, you know, there's only a certain amount of dollars. So it's a case where to be able to front this forum, it's, it's, there's limitations, you know, yeah.
It'll be a portion, we won't be able to do the full amount, I would sense that we couldn't.
I mean, it's a case of, yeah, we'd have to, there's only so much money, you know, it's sitting back, so it's a case of determining that, but again...
That's understandable, and it is worth noting that this timeline, and I do push things aggressively, and I've also been, I push things too aggressively.
But it's okay, Lana, because it will get done faster than 16 years.
Sure.
One way or the other, how we're going to do this.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for the information, we'll look forward to communicating here then, so, yeah.
Merry Christmas.
Oh, you're fine, you're fine, no problem here.
It's a short meeting of the year.
No problem, no problem.
It's our shortest meeting.
No problem, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have is the amended 2020 salary ordinance. I think everybody received.
And once again, I always defer, it's all right like it's supposed to be.
Yeah, I had...
No major changes.
Right.
Well, this one, yeah, I mean, this does have changes to it, but I'm curious to know, in this, this has to do, Nate, if you know... Yeah, it's in reference to the increased salary that the commissioners voted on in the contract. Is this is your, is this for a one-year contract? I'm not familiar, I've never seen the contract, so...
The contract that they presented me was from 2020, 21, 22.
Okay, so it's...
Essentially, it was a revision to what the existing agreement was.
What this pertains to is the $20,000 stipend that the state of Indiana is increasing over last year for a highway engineer stipend, which in the past, we've had 20,000, correct me if I'm wrong, we have 20,000 per year. That, that's per county, right? Each county gets...
Each county is eligible for that.
For the eligible for it.
Off the top, the state cuts, offers every county that was the 20,000.
Yeah, so now they're upping that another 20,000 for whatever use the county decides on, whether it's salary or, there's no, it can be done for... Is it only, it has to be salary?
It is essentially, has to be spent towards...
I thought it could be for the, it could be over increments too, right? I talked to another county, and I don't think they're doing the whole 20,000.
Correct, but the stipend that you give is for salary.
Yeah, it's for the highway.
You can put it on, you can buy a vehicle with it or...
Yeah, other, it can be for office supplies too and things like that, right? Oh, it isn't, okay, I don't know, I don't know what the details were. The only question I have in regards, and again, no complaints about any performance or anything, it's just the fact that if we get to 20,000, we still have to match social security and match perf out of that 20,000, right? So we wouldn't have the money, we'd have to probably do an additional appropriation to go above and beyond 20,000 to...
It's all in the highway budget, so it'll come out of...
It comes right out of the money that the state gives us.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, but in, within their, within their amount though, it's going to cost another 1,500 some dollars in social security and then what's the perf too? So there's another 3,500 plus that comes out to get him, to get the $20,000 salary. That's the only thing, I didn't, and when I talked to another county, they said they weren't, the way I understood, this was a week ago, they weren't going to go the full 20, because they wanted all of it to come out of that 20,000. I just, it's, I guess that's my concern, is it's going to cost us 23, 24,000, so it's actually going to cost total.
21, 546 total. They, they increased 20,000 over the 2019 salary, so, which put it at 95. Next year, it was supposed to be 77. So really, from what it was supposed to be next year to what it is going to be, that's an increase of 18,000.
So it's costing us 1,546 more.
Right, and so the perf and social security, it'll be 21, 546.
Okay, so it's going to cost us 1,540 more of and beyond this 20,000 the state's going to send us. I guess that was my only concern, is that we, I mean, is it a case of...
And it comes out of the highway budget, so Josh will have to...
It's over the course of the year.
Yeah, over the whole year. To give him a $20,000 salary, it's going to cost us 1,546 more to get, give him a $20,000 salary, is what I'm saying.
It's inconsequential in the grand scheme.
If it's not a big deal, it's just...
He just gets it in his own budget, right?
Well, yeah, it's out of the highway, again, that's all, all that money comes from highway use, so it's fuel tax, things of that nature. There's no, in our, I believe, I'm pretty sure in our county, there's no tax levy money that goes to highway. Yeah, it's already strictly a highway use.
And so he'll transfer for now.
It would be taken away from the budget of the county.
Yeah, yeah, that 1,500 some dollars would be less than we would have for them to buy stone and stuff, is what I'm trying to say. So it's a case of, if anybody's concerned with that?
I am not.
No, I'm not.
Nobody is, then? That's, I'm just trying to let everybody know, it's not, it's not the way it showed upfront, it's more than what it shows, so it's okay.
Yeah, valid concern, but inconsequential.
Okay, that's fine. Any other questions in this amendment then? That's the only change, right, just that, just that, okay. Do we have motions, is there a number?
2019, 25.
I'll make a motion, will you approve?
Amended.
Amended salary ordinance 2019-25.
25. Got a second? Any further questions? If not, all in favor, signify, raise your hand. Pose, motion carries there.
Appreciate all your efforts, Nate.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Especially on the RSD, you can't leave.
All right, we have miscellaneous business?
I have a lot, I have a ton miscellaneous when we get to it.
Okay, we're there, go ahead.
Three years ago, I stepped into a position on the Bluffin Now Board. I was filling the seat of the outgoing Dr. Van Winkle when he left council. And I am going to remove myself from that board in probably two months. Probably be there January, February, and I'm looking for somebody to fill that spot. It's not appointed by the council or the commissioners. It's just, the Bluffin Now Board appreciates having somebody from council and commissioners on that board. It's a board of about 24 people, you're a voting member. Blake is the commissioner on the board, so just thought I'd throw that out there.
When do they meet, Chuck?
Pardon?
When do they meet, like what time?
The first Wednesday of every month, noon A C V C. And the meetings usually go longer than an hour, but you could call it an hour if you wanted to, so.
What was it, evening, she said?
Bluffin Now?
No, was it, was it, oh, noon.
Yeah.
Okay, you say...
I can make it work.
Make something work on it?
Yeah.
So we don't have to do anything formal here, it's just something...
If you want, Chuck, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, and do there, so, okay.
Appreciate it very much.
You said, what was your first Wednesday?
First Wednesday of every month.
Okay, starting in March?
That would, that would work out good for me, yeah, yeah. But, you know, if you wanted to come, January, February.
I just have to look at my schedule that far, yeah, make sure you start blocking it.
We'll have a seated table for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And also just to let you know, we did receive, if you get the consent...
Great, the wheel tax?
Oh, we're doing something with that already? Yeah, we usually, they want, they want us to fully raise it or not, yeah.
Do you want me to have Roy redo the ordinance to increase it to 750? If we don't do anything, it'll automatically increase anyway.
I sent you an email, but I thought, yeah, we needed to...
Help me out again, another one.
It was $5, and the state made us now have to do 750 minimum, so they increased the, what, $2.50, because we were already at 5, so...
They're making us do a minimum higher than it was.
Okay, so we need to get that revised in, after the first of the year then, right? Okay, got you there. And we also did receive our consent order.
Yes.
So we are officially going to have money here for the first of the year, so we're good. I know, I know it sounds like everything's taken care of, but until you get that official action, you have a budget that's starting in January, so. Anything else for the, good of the order? Guess if not, I'd wish everybody, yeah, just say wish...
Glad to see it go through another cycle.
Yeah, we made it, so wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy and prosperous new year here, so.
Thank you.
And enjoy it all year. We have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have seconds. All in favor, signify, raise your hand. No leave yet, so we still got, we still got some science.